I'd like to call the board this meeting of Mercer County Board of Education, Mr. Booer.
Good evening, Mr. One, Amber Francesca. Mr. Two, Mary Yeager. Mr. Three, Billy Montgomery. Mr. Four, Cliff Pruitt. Here. And Mr. Five, Randy Phillips.
Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make the motion.
Mr. Montgomery, the motion, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Francesca, second, all of them. And next is a swearing in of our new student board member.
Yes, we're excited to add our student board member for the 23 and 24 school year. We had our interviews a week or two ago, and Emily Chunglo is our senior at Mercer Senior High School. It's going to be our student representative. We're excited to have her on the board. She does a great job. She's in all leadership positions, including the FFA president of the school. And we're really excited about adding her to our Board of Education, our student rep. So at this time, we'll have our swearing in, our board secretary, Holly Cook. Me, her, and Emily will be up here. This is always interesting, swearing in is the verbiage from way back in maybe 1800s. That's where it's going from.
Ready to your right hand. Okay, reading after me. I do solemnly, do you solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
And be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully execute?
And that I will faithfully execute.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
The office of the member of the Mercer County Board of Education?
The office of the member of the Mercer County Board of Education.
According to law?
According to law.
And I do further solemnly swear?
And I do further solemnly swear?
That since the adoption of the present Constitution?
That since the adoption of the present Constitution?
I, being a citizen of this state?
I, being a citizen of this state?
Have not fought a duel with deadly weapons?
Have not fought a duel with deadly weapons?
Nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge?
Nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge?
Nor aided or assisted any person that is offering?
Nor aided or assisted in any person that is offering?
So help me God.
So help me God.
That one's been a little murderous until that part, I don't know what he'll say. All right, up next will be our pledge of allegiance soon. Does it say what I think you're leading that?
Our board member is going to lead us in the pledge, if everyone will please say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no public participation signups for the evening, so we will start with our reports. And first up will be our finance officers' report. This is mine.
So our ending general plan cash balance for the month of July is 7.24 million as opposed to 5.7 million last year at the same time. Our overall revenue increased 9% compared to the prior year. And receipts in the year were up 78% compared to the prior year. Keep in mind that when you look at those comparisons from the prior year, we had our, you know, when you're looking at now, we've already done adjustments back into year before. So we're in the process right now of doing those adjustments with our audit coming up and doing all of the accounting work that we do at the end of the year. So we will have related that will go back into last year still that is really sitting here right now on the books for July, but really doesn't count for July. So that will go down a little bit. That's why it looks really high compared to last year at the same time. Our expenses are up 12% compared to the prior year at the same time, which is actually lower than the prior year, which was up 24%. So it has cut in half compared to last year at the same time. And in the month of July, our expenses were just under 700,000. And again, the month of July, our expenses are always lower than they are. June is a really big month on expenses. July is a smaller month of expenses, just because we don't have all of our big payrolls. So then in August, you're going to see that go up significantly because we start paying all of our staff come August 15th. And so we just had that big first payroll go out to all of our employees for the first time. And then we have even more new employees that will go on the next one and that kind of thing and making updates as people get rate changes and that kind of thing. So all those things will increase those expenses as well moving forward. So are there any questions? We also have our new banks and stuff on them. So we have three banking accounts on there right now. It's been, it's been a little bit early, but I'm breaking it out so you all can see those differences on there. So it looks a little bit different than what you're used to seeing also.
Next will be our attendance and role reports.
Good evening. This is information just to let you know where we stand. Students have actually shown up in the classroom. So you can see that Mercer Elementary School is up more than nine students than we were expecting. And then King Middle School is up 21 students. So we're really excited to see those numbers kind of going in that direction. The other two buildings are a little bit lower, but not drastically. So I'm glad to see the little, see the increase that we're seeing in those numbers. Do you have any questions about that?
That's good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Personnel report, assuming everybody's had an opportunity to produce that. And from there, we will move on to Mr. Booer's superintendent of people for the month.
Yeah, a few things for just getting the new year started. We're excited about this upcoming year. The preliminary scores from the spring test, KSA scores, should be in any time now. So we're looking forward to those and starting to break those down for our school district. Enrollment is up, like Ms. Hazen said, for this year was good. Our new learning center on copper, our new elementary school, we've been doing a lot of work on the design, which you'll hear about a little later, coming up on the agenda. All of our open houses are completed, and we had a great showing and great turnout from our students and parents for all of our open houses. We appreciate all the administration and teachers. A wonderful job well done of hosting all those people in the buildings prior to school starting. Our art department wants to thank the Board of Education for the drama department, for new lights for their stage and auditorium and the wireless mic systems that they have now in the auditorium. So they want to give a thank you for that. We want to say thank you to Farm Bureau and Isaiah House again for the, and this is the third year that they have purchased all the student tickets for Mercer County students to all home games in regular season this way. That saves our parents a lot of money. I know as one would have two kids and loved going to all the games, that saves you a lot of money as a parent. We appreciate them sponsoring all of our students this year for upcoming regular season games. Our golf team won our first championship of this season, and it was even before school started. So they won the class AA region championship, and they're going to the state tournament in Owensboro here shortly. Our big ball game for the football team is this Saturday, and we play Taylor County after the Woodford County versus Bullitt Peace game. That's all I've got tonight.
Lots of good things.
It's getting started.
That's a good way to get rolling. Thank you, sir. Consent agenda items will be next, six consent agenda items. Everyone should have seen earlier, got a chance to review. Do you have anything to talk about any of those? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda, please?
I make the motion.
Mr. Yeager makes the motion, may I have a second? Mr. Montgomery, second, all of them. We have an action items discussion on this one. So up next, we do have several action items for roll call votes. And the first one, Amber, if you'll come forward, talk about the tax rates.
Okay, you have some attachments there. One of those, the very bottom one, is basically a summary of everything, as much as you can summarize all of the information. Still a couple of pages there front and back. But basically, we received our tax assessments on July 24th, and so we have 45 days from that day to set our tax rate. So that would be September 7th. If at that point we were not to set a tax rate, then we automatically are put into the compensating tax rate at that point in time. The law changed a little bit, or the interpretation of the law changed a little bit when it came down to that 4% increase on the revenue rate a couple of years ago, when it came down to a tax hearing. And the only time you really have to have a tax hearing is if it goes above that rate or if you're even wanting to consider above that rate. Due to the fact that we did not have a hearing, we are not able to consider a rate above that at this time. So that is all you're seeing, are those rates that fall. I mean, there is one rate on here that is above that, but you are not able to vote on that one tonight. So there's just some historical information on here so you can see, basically over the last 10 years, overall, the district has increased taxes 7.6 cents per $100 of assessed value on property. You can see some historical figures on if we, you know, took the 4%, if we didn't, what that means as far as revenue goes. But basically, without taking the 4% increase on the revenue every single year, that has amounted to just under $6.4 million lost in revenue since the 2012 through 2014 school year. You can look down below that, and that gives you some of our options and kind of what that looks like as far as if you were to have a 100% collection rate, which does not happen, what that would look like as far as revenue goes. And so really, the options that you can consider tonight would be the compensating rate, which would be at 68.9 percent, or 68.9 cents for real estate, 71 for personal property. You have the 4% increase rate, which would be 71.6 for both. And then you have, you could always keep it at the same tax rate that we are currently at, which would be 70.2 for real estate and 70.6 for personal property. You'll notice the little asterisks beside some of those. That is for exemptions. So in the year before, there were individuals that qualified for exemptions for disability, homestead, they reached a certain age and they qualify. And that takes a certain amount off of their assessment for their property. And that normally happens after our assessments have already been made, so they can either receive a refund or in Knoxville Taxville, they don't believe in pay it. So we are able to recoup some of that revenue the next year by adding some into that. And that does not count in going above that 4%. That's an automatic that we can add on there without having to have a hearing or anything. So when you look at what, you know, what does that mean for our taxpayer in all of these scenarios? So essentially, at the compensating rate, if we were to take that on real estate, it would mean 13 less dollars per $100,000 of assessed value of their homes. So for a $100,000 home, they would be paying 13 less dollars a year for taxes. On $30,000 of personal property, so that could be vehicle, well, there's motor vehicles, so you're talking more like motor homes, boats, that kind of thing, they would be paying $1.20 more a year for personal property. On the 4% increase rate, you're looking at on the $100,000 home for real estate, being $14 more a year. And that's a year, so it's not, you know, every month or anything like that. On the personal property for $30,000 assessed values per dollars. And then obviously, if we keep the rate the same, there's no change on that for the taxpayer. Something else to take into consideration is that we have three nickels in our district, which means that we have money that automatically goes into our building fund for facility purposes. That is restricted funds for that purpose. And so those equal out to 12.7 cents of this tax rate. So you can see over on the very right-hand side of that top little column there, that the amounts that are left over then to put basically into the general fund after what goes into the building fund at that point in time. So then moving on after that, you'll see, and there's a lot of language under here just so you can kind of see some of that information, like I go over what that means for a $200,000 home or $300,000 home, just so you can see some of those examples there. But as far as what that revenue looks like, we are really more at a 96% collection rate. I looked back, I look every year to try to get us, you know, to make sure that that average is staying pretty close to that. It is. So when you really do the math out, our compensating rate would really amount to about $7.1 million in general fund revenue at that 96% collection rate. The 4% increase rate would amount to 7.46 million, and then the same rate would come out to 7.36 million. So if you look down below that table there, you'll see what that means in relation to what we actually received in fiscal year 23. So that's when we're seeing the comparison of above with each other, but then down below here, we're seeing the comparison with what we actually received in 2023. So if we were to take compensating compared to what we actually received in 2023, we could see at a 96% collection rate, a decrease in revenue in general fund of $44,000 if it stays at that 96% collection rate. So that's obviously not what we want to see. The 4% increase rate would give us $306,000, and then the same rate would give us around $172,000 in the general fund. And so then when you look at that, and we talked about compounding on the front page and everything at the very beginning, when it comes down to not taking that increase every single year, you know, what does that look like over time? So in this particular one, without taking the 4% increase on that tax rate, man, we're talking, you know, $350,000 this year between compensating and 4%. But then what does that look like over five years, in 10 years, in 20 years? So we're talking, you know, this project tonight, we're going to have our architects come up and talk to you about the elementary school, which is very exciting, and what we really need in our district. But, you know, on a 20-year bond, you know, $7 million could go a really long way on making payments on that. And that's lost revenue if it doesn't get passed. I mean, that's just how it goes. And so when you're making those decisions, those are the decisions you have to make. When you're making decisions, when it comes down to the expenses and what you're putting out there, you also have to think about how you're paying for it, just like you do at home. You can't just go out and buy a house or a car and have no job. You know, you have to think of how you're not going to pay for it. This is essentially the only way we can make our own money in municipal districts is tax rates and setting those tax rates. So basically, I will always, I'm never going to ask you, I will always ask you for the increase, because we can always use more money in our district, but I will never ask you for more money to just set in a bank account. So what are we going to use the money on? Obviously, if it's compensating, we're going to have to cut something because it looks like we're wanting to have a decrease compared to last year. And then with some increased costs, I mean, we have inflation going on anyway. And then on top of that, we had our athletic project that we just, you know, we're completing right now, the new elementary school, we just gave raises. Anything else that we had that we want to do, I mean, sustaining those things. We had some federal grant money that will be ending shortly, and so we want to make sure that we're aware of those things and that we stay on top of those things. With the 4% or same rate, any kind of increase in revenue whatsoever will go towards some of those facility needs, so that could go towards the bonding. We are going to have to put some general fund money aside. Whether we have to actually utilize it or not, we'll just have to see at the time when it comes down to the bonding. But we will have to put some general fund money to the side when it comes down to bonding for three years, leaving up to basically kind of borrowing money from ourselves ahead of time when it comes down to bonding for the new elementary school project. This could definitely help with that. So obviously, increased instructional supports due to learning loss, because once we no longer have some of those federal funds, those needs may still be there. We are still going to have to support some of those things. Raises that you've given to staff that I'm hugely thankful for, and I know all of our staff is, but we have to be able to sustain those raises. We don't want to go back in a year or two and say, oh, wait a minute, we have to take those back. That's never a good thing to do. And then obviously, we have preschool supplies for our students that was a really good effort that we all put in this board a few years back, and we have been able to provide almost $450,000 worth of allocated school supplies for our families. And I know that that is greatly appreciated by a lot of our families in our community. So in order to continue that, that's where we're going to be. Then if you look at the budget, just keep in mind, the budget table on here, it says working budget. I'm not updating anything else on the working budget other than these numbers. This is tentative budget technically, with tax numbers thrown into it. So keep that in mind, that it doesn't have any other updates to any of the other revenues on there, so beginning balances and anything like that. It doesn't have any other updates on the expense side. It just plugged in just the tax information from the tentative budget. You can see what those impacts would be when it comes down to that. And really, you're looking at that contingency percentage most of the time to kind of see what does that look like. And you can see across the board, you know, compensating would get you 13.7% basically. 4% gets you a little over 15%. And then the same rate would get you about 14.8% contingency. And then I always want to show you in last year, when it came down to tax rates, how we compare to the districts surrounding us and how we rank, what kind of nickels they have compared to us, because it's not a true comparison unless you're looking at that. If it's a district that has a really low tax rate around us, and you're like, how do they do that? Well, they may not have any nickels either, and so they're not restricting any of their funds, so every bit of their tax rate may go into their general fund. And then if there are districts that's an independent, they may be collecting their own taxes, and so they're not having the expense of commission money that they're paying towards the sheriff's office or something like that. So keep all of those things in mind as well. But basically, in the 22-23 school year, there were 66 higher tax rates than Mercer County. And no, when we put that on there, I mean, if there are 10 other districts at the same tax rate as us, it just kind of puts us in there, you know, in one of those numbers. And that happens a lot. There are numerous districts that are basically at the same level. There were 104 lower tax rates in Mercer County. Out of the 171 districts, 54 levy the other tax rate, 23 levy the compensating rate, and 94 levy the 4% rate, which is the highest I've seen since I've been a finance officer. Normally, you know, I'm not ever seeing typically above like 75 to any districts that levy the 4% at any given time. And then there's that note about the exonerations below that. And then we are at the max rate for motor vehicles at 49.1 cents per 100 of assessed value, and that's the rate that I would hope that we would stay at. That's the recommended rate from the state.
Questions, no. I wanted to add, I had one thing to her. When she said the backpack program that we do, which makes us, and that's something that a lot of districts don't do, but we also, most districts do, just do six hours of college credit that they pay for. That gives them the first two classes in college. But you all, the last couple of years, have done, you all want their first semester paid for in college. That's 15 hours. So that's something that's always been our general fund. That makes us stand out a little bit, some of the districts around us are, I don't know that any districts around us that do that, that fund the first 15 hours of their college credit here at the high school. So that's one other thing, besides the backpack program for the school supply program.
Your recommendation?
My recommendation's 4%. I've said this my entire career, you know, I live here, of course, in Mercer County, taxpayer as well, kids both in college, but there's no better investment than what you can do in our kids in this community. So I recommend the 4% tax rate.
Anybody have any question in the discussion? If none, can I please have a motion of approval for 4% increase? Ms. Francesca makes the motion, can I have a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Montgomery, second. Ms. Chunglo, would you give the roll call?
District one, Amber Francesca. Yes. District two, Mary Yeager.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
And district five, Randy Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Okay, up next will be Beth, I think you're up here for approval, designing development
Hi, good evening. I do want to introduce Gary. This is Gary Schultz. He's with CMTA Engineers, and he's our mechanical engineer. And so I think this is Gary's first meeting on this project here, so he's going to have a party at this as well. So we are here for the design development phase. This is the schedule for how the construction project goes. So we've completed programing and schematic design. We are now wrapping up design development with all of the items on the agenda tonight. We will then move into construction documents, and then go out to bid, and then construction begins. So we'll first start with the floor plan. So you'll remember this from our schematic design presentation that we made. This has now been developed a little bit more. We've had very minor changes, a little bit in the front admin suite. The kitchen is being developed a little bit more and just kind of some nudging around those spaces, but everything is pretty much at the same spot. This work footage is pretty much the same as where it was before, but we've just been developing things more, starting to extrude the building and look at the form and shape. So as we did that, I want to just kind of briefly go over some design concepts that brought us to where we're at today. So as we started to think about this project, we were wanting to think about the location here in central Kentucky, Kentucky nature, different natural elements, even the history in this area. And those were all things that really impacted the colors that we were proposing and the materials of the building. So we had, and also these are some of the more natural materials. So we had shirts in our office to look at different concepts. These are some of the sketches that different teams came up with. We narrowed it down into three. We had meetings with Mr. Booer and ended up moving forward with one. And this is where we'll show you the exterior, how that evolved. So using the floor plan and extruding it up into volumes and then putting a roof on it and windows, this is the angle from the southwest. You can see the canopies. This is the parent loop, the roof there, and the canopies will go out to the road where students are dropped off, the one that goes along the building, that is to the bus loop. There's metal panels on the building, a masonry veneer. There's a flagpole area with a seat wall. The front of the building, I think, has a very vital to it. The metal panels are blue with red letters and white letters of the school, so keeping with the red and blue color scheme. with the red and blue color scheme. The majority of the classroom lanes are masonry veneer with metal panels at the top and a silvery metal roof. On the south side, we're showing sunshades as a way to help with solar heat gain. And this is also something that will have a positive impact on the mechanical equipment in the building and helping to reduce load with the south facade. This is the courtyard. It's a very spacious courtyard. The flat green area there would be the preschool playground. We don't have any of that modeled yet, but that would be for the preschoolers to be kind of tucked back into this courtyard area. This is looking at the north face of the cafeteria. There's lots of glass. It's very open, faces north. It's great light for that area, very tall space, and it looks out towards the playground. This is from the bus loop looking over towards the building. The tall volume there is the gym. So this is a site plan. This has the very similar approach to what we showed last time, we just modified it a bit. And I think with showing the actual lanes and the arrows, this will help with showing how site circulation will work on the campus. So this is a diagram that shows the different ways people will come in. So first is the green line that shows the buses. So they will come in and they will go to the left. And that's buses for kindergarten, first and second grade. There are spots for E10 buses there. They can, in the morning, just pull straight up, drop off at the lane. In the afternoon, you can align E10 buses. Kids will look and then they will peel off one at a time and exit. The parking lot, if that's to the left of the bus loop, that is for staff. So that gets all of the staff parking out of the lane so that as students are coming in with buses, parent circulation, that traffic happens. Parents go to the right, buses go to the left, and so cars or staff are operating cars. So we're trying to separate the different traffic patterns as soon as it enters the site, thinking about the schedule. So the next line there is the red line. That is the parents for kindergarten, first and second. So they have a loop that goes up to the front door and the front canopy. When you come in, you will turn right and that lane will continue straight. Then if you go basically to the right door, there's kind of the outer loop and that's the preschool, that's the blue line. So trying to separate preschool from K through two as quick as you can. So that's what that outer loop that goes up by the preschool lane is showing. And then that have exits separately than the K through two. So we're trying to keep that all separate and not have a backing up. There is a red line for the parents. There's an area that you can basically bypass the car stacking. So I think smart that goes, there shouldn't be anyone stuck in line. There's none parking. They can pull up to the front. There's without white cars at the end of the sidewalk. We have 70 stacking spots for K through two and it was about 20 for preschool. So there's a lot of areas for the site. You can, the words are over top of the playground, but you can see at the top, there's a basketball court and a playground on the north lane. And then in the courtyard, that playground is for the preschool. And then also in the basically kind of like the elbow of the lane, that is the outdoor plaza area that could be used as an outdoor classroom that is accessible off of the art and media center.
Let me ask you real quick, because if you look at that picture, you'll know the preschool, just the traffic, because that's a big thing we've been discussing a lot. Preschool is not on the same exact schedule of time as K two. So there won't be all of this at the same exact time. We may stagger those about 20 minutes, 15, 20 minutes. So those blue and red lines she's talking about aren't sitting there intertwining the whole time for parent drop off pickup.
So there's lots of mechanical electrical funding there.
Good evening. Whereas Beth and MTA and her team kind of make things look pretty, I like to think of the engineering as bringing the building to life. We can provide all the heating and air conditioning, the power, lighting, and data services for the building. So we'll just go through briefly, starting on the exterior. So from a plumbing fire protection standpoint, the site that you all have picked, we're needing to pump the sanitary from the site to an existing force bank with the city owns over Long Bohan Road. So we'll be pumping that along US 127 bypass to that intersection and making a connection there. Very similar to the connections that have been made for the sports, the baseball and softball facilities, very similar to that. The domestic fire protection and water line will actually be brought from US 127 from the east along the roadway along there to get to the site. Distributed from there, natural gas is actually on the long 127 bypass right about close over the driveway onto the site. From an HVAC perspective on the site, we're looking at having a geothermal well field, which about the only thing you'll see underground is manatees. Everything will be buried, will circulate water through those wells, heat pump type arrangements to provide the heat and cooling for the entire building. Electrically, the utility that's closest there is a connect utility. We'll have to extend, been in conversations with K already. And so they're looking to, best thing to do is to bring the three-phase rivers along the north side of the property to a point and then locate a pad mount transformer kind of behind the building. So any overhead lines will be along the north property line. Find a pad mount transformer there behind the kitchen cafeteria. We're still in development of that and where that is actually going to be. And we're looking at LED site lighting throughout the site for all the parking, the drives and playground areas that are necessarily moving into the building.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You talked about the KU with three-phase coming in. Now, will that pad mount be out at the property line or back next to the building?
There'll be more, we need to stay at least 25 feet away from the natural building itself. So we're looking to integrate that into the loading area, into the kitchen. So it'll be away from the building, away from the playground areas, but it will be on the north side of the property.
I guess asking a question is, when on the property, will it be over line, overhead water on the property? Or can we bring that in underground when it hits our property?
It is possible to run it underground. It is more costly to, the further you go underground, the more expensive it is. So our thinking at this point was to route along the north property line overhead. That's the least expensive way to do that. But once we get to a point, then we can drop a load grade and run into, into the property to the pad mount transformer.
That's right.
That's right. So the only place that you would have overhead left of the line is would be directly along that property line.
Also, I asked a question. I don't know if you've really answered this or Beth, but maybe this is, maybe I should have already asked this question. But I don't know that much about the geothermal levels.
Okay.
And so I was wondering, what is the standard lifespan for that and what kind of maintenance does it require?
So the well field itself is essentially, we're drilling on the site, we drill a hole 400 feet deep.
Yeah, I saw that. Which is really, I'm thinking, that's a long distance to have to go with. You've got to make it something for.
But no, it's a really good question. The pipe that would be put down, installed down that whole fill-in route so the spurs tee goes up. That pipe is pressure tested and all of that is tested. We run a horizontal line piping that's really shallow, three to four feet down. The pipe itself is warranted for like 50 years. So once it's installed, pressure tested, everything, before we cover everything up and make sure that all the joints are fitted well, any field made joints are within like three feet of the surface. So those are the places, those are the points on that system that tend to fail. So and you're going to find those shortly after it's installed. So we've got, we've had well fields that have been in service for 23 years and have not had any problems with the actual wells installed, tunnels installed. So the natural maintenance, it's a pipe, buried in the ground, claws around, it doesn't move, it's running, it probably shouldn't. But there's really no maintenance associated with it. We flush water through there to guard the reinstallation process to get any degree or error that happens to be getting in the system to really get all that out. Good question. Does that answer your question?
It does. I guess my mind is going way on the other mind, like what that is going to look like to get 400 foot down. However far.
If anything does happen to an individual well, we designed so that we can isolate a portion of the well field to keep the rain system running. And if we had to, we could draw a little down. You're not going to, you're not going to pull that pipe out.
Right.
Once that pipe's there, it's.
Okay, thank you.
So moving into, then inside the building, fire protection wise, we're going to be a 100% wet pipe, full sprinkled. That provides us a lot of advantages to the building itself, the construction, and provides the highest level of protection for the occupants that we provide. Plumbing wise, we'll have the center to lift station and camp room located near the kitchen. They'll pop out to the main utility. Two domestic water service entrances. The reason we have that, we'll have one for the main camp room and we'll have one for the copper part storm shelter. Copper parts provide two hours of utilities, one of those being water, protected installation. So that's why we kind of split that up into, well, natural gas and then the camp room for water meters will also serve the kitchen, the water closets, barrels. Through our conversations, Mr. Brewer has kind of pointed out we use the automatic battery flush valves and sensor faucets throughout the building, so they're all touchless, except in a few locations where a manual faucet is being incorporated. But all the public restaurants, all the classroom restaurants, they'll all be touchless. We found a refrigerated filter with the automatic bottle filler stations throughout the building for located freezer wall hydrants around the perimeter of the building so that you can easily get to hose anywhere on site with about 100 feet of height. So I think those. As you can see, we continue on the bonding from the water source. Geothermal system will be connected to our heat pumps. We're getting those on mezzanines, other core doors to kind of separate, use some of that roof volume to house the chemical system, provide access, easy access up on those locations for maintenance, technicians, things like that. We're providing a head dedicated outside air system for ventilation throughout the building, utilizing energy recovery to retreats, outside air comes in. The storm shelter will act separate, give recovery, ventilation system as part of it, kind of isolating all of the systems as much as possible within the storm shelter. Electrically, we're going to be 400 volt, three-phase electric service to, and chemicals distributed from there. Storm shelter will provide an uninterrupted power supply system to basically, to launch battery to power all of the emergency systems necessary for the storm shelter in case that actually happened to be used. Local sound systems will be provided in the cafeteria, which we said a few days ago, things like that. And LED lighting is throughout with dimmable lighting available in classrooms. Each classroom will be individually able to dim their lights to the desired level. Any questions about the LED?
So going back to the project schedule, right now we're presenting the D, the design development documents to you. And we'll have several more months of work to further develop these drawings and make them ready to go out to the printer. So the plan right now is to bring construction documents back in December. And then we'll put it out to bid. With the bid opening, we have a contract over in March and then begin construction in April next year. And we're looking at two years of construction. So that's our schedule. On the agenda tonight, we do have the BG two document. And I just wanted to show, it's a three-page document that talks about the energy, equipment, fixed items, all the finishes. And it's just kind of a summary of all of the components of the building in this document. We do have to revise it again at the CE phase. This is the one where we will list alternates. And so right now, we don't have any alternates, but I do expect that when we come back at the CE phase, we'll have some alternates, just trying to get that base bit down, planning ahead for good day. The BG three document is the cost opinion. And so right now, we're at 30.5 million. That's about $425 a square foot. So it's, you know, it's a lot of money, but it's kind of on track for what we're seeing with items or projects that are bidding in this climate right now. So as we get closer to bidding, we will definitely be watching all of the projects out there, anything that's similar to this, to see what that is, how bits are coming in, especially in this particular area. So this just itemizes all the different things. Some of them are estimates and some of them have already been paid for, like the geotech and the survey, the other items under the soft costs, like special inspections, those are just estimates. And as we, once we put it out to bid, those items will actually be put off for an RPA to get an actual cost on those. So that's just a summary of the costs and.
Beth will be adding about the geothermal. The great thing is, you know, cost of wind up, that's a bad thing. But the great thing about this building right now is, like Jason from CMTA, I believe it was, said, right now there's a grant that allows us to get geothermal, which is the most expensive HVAC system you can have, but most efficient at the cheaper types of HVAC price because there's a grant right now that we're going to get reimbursed, I can use the $2 million or above back once we build this. So that would, that'll be a refund to us from the federal grant for putting geothermal. So that helps us save the cost.
Initially.
Yes, you got volume initially, then you get a refund a few months later.
So the 30.5 is everything that has been requested, but I do think just to help us on the day, we do want to get that lower. So anything that we can improve on to make it more cost effective, we can do that. We can also take some items of good ones to more of the wish list. So I think that's something that we want to be very careful as we go into the next phase, just to try to pull some items out as alternates. And that will be reflected in the BG two. But right now that our line, the BG three is everything. So any questions to go back to the good?
Is the retention in the kitchen basin, so we, has that been studied?
Yeah. For those, they weren't, we didn't show them. I think that kind of cropped. The plan is.
I'll work that from the top.
Yeah, we still wanna have one up at the top and one on the east side. And we've, we've been trying to reduce the paint areas. So that's kind of like a balance as far as like whatever, our escape areas, we have to account that for the detention area. So it's kind of as things change, those calculations change. So it's, as we go into construction documents, we'll be able to better figure out the area for that. But I think we still need the two on the north and on the east. And there it's isolated so you can get them so that you're not like, trying to turn them, walking through them.
Yeah, I mean, like, really, you can have one on the affected area, it would be more subtle. East side, we'll set the others.
Any further questions? We do have several items related to this that we'll need to discuss and vote on. But the first one is that we need a motion for approval of these design development documents.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pruitt makes a motion, can I have a second please? Mr. Montgomery's second, Ms. Chumblow would you be rolling?
District one, Amber Franceschi. Yes. District two, Larry Yeager.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. Up next, the approval of BG2, which Beth, if there's anything else you wanna add to that.
If there's any questions on BG2?
If there's no questions, can I have a motion for approval?
Make a good one.
Mr. Montgomery makes a motion, may I have a second? Ms. Franceschi's second, roll call please.
District one, Amber Franceschi.
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
And district five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. The next will be the approval of BG3. Just general questions if you have any, is there any more questions about that? If not, can I have a motion for approval of BG3? Mr. Montgomery makes a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pruitt's second, roll call please.
District one, Amber Franceschi.
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
And district five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. Next, geothermal wall test.
Yeah, just a brief description of what this is. In areas where we have not previously done geothermal wellfields, what we really like to do is to. I'm not sure what I, oh, yes. Is to drill a test well. What that does is that helps inform the design as to what's underneath the earth, whether there's any running voids, any water aquifers, any pockets of gas, that kind of thing. Use this to inform our calculations as to exactly how big that wellfield actually looks to be. One thing that is very important to understand is that this well, this test well, that we'll be approving, will be integrated into the final well. So it will not be thrown away or anything like that. So this, this well is actually being used in the final design. So we received three different proposals, all from good drillers in the region. And recommend to award to T and M drilling for $10,000.
Any questions? Remind me what, what was the other test drilling that we needed?
The geothermal.
The geotech.
Or yeah, the geotech, sorry. Geotech, that's more for structural and site. And then this geothermal test well is going all the way down. So the geotech is not as deep, no. It's just to figure out, like, are we hitting rock, what type of soil do we have? And that determines the bearing capacity for the building that the structural engineer uses. So different, I mean, it's still drilling all the way underground, but it's different, you're looking at different things.
So when they drill this 400 foot hole, what, what could happen that would prevent us from having geothermal?
Not much. Unless we find a huge void, I think would be the only thing that would prevent us from doing geothermal. Most voids are small, we can easily traverse through with, with well itself. In my experience, I can't think of any project that I've been involved with where we drove test well and they said, no, we can't do geothermal for this project. We may, we may just move it on site. But in my experience, we've never had a project that said that we can't do geothermal.
So if that, when that's happened in the past where you had to remove the location, is that a second drill test?
It could, yes. And then ultimately, if that does happen, then to your point, yes, this, this initial well will most likely be abandoned.
That's not gonna happen.
I'm confident that we're not gonna get, get to that point.
Mr. Pruitt? If nothing else, can I have a motion for approval to award geothermal well test for T and M drilling? Mr. Montgomery makes a motion, can I have a second? Second, Mr. Pruitt's second, roll call.
District one, Amber Franceschi.
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
And district five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. Let's change order.
So a little bit of background on this. Previously, Montgomery approved and paid for a survey of the property. In our investigation of getting utilities, specifically sanitary sewer and water to the site, we realized that the survey did not require them. And so this change order, you two add, the diagram that you see, the area we're in has already been surveyed. We've already been using that information. This change would add two yellow rectangles on either side along the right of way to, I guess, 127 bypasses. To get to a point to where we do connect to existing utilities, water on the east and the existing forced paint on the west.
Is this just not something that was foreseen initially?
So based on, based on where those utilities are located, how far we have to go, we just need a little bit more survey and understanding of the, of the local degrees and the other utilities up in that east. That we could, that we need to report this.
So this is, those two yellow areas?
Correct.
Questions? If not, can I have a motion to, for approval to change it? Make a good one. Mr. Montgomery makes a motion, may I have a second please?
I'll say.
Mr. Pruitt's second, roll call.
District one, Amber Franceschi.
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
And district five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. Flood test proposal.
So one thing that's on an engineering capacity, specifically for the fire protection, we need to know what the local water source utility is able to provide as far as flow and pressure. To inform our fire suppression sprinkler design. And it's very common for us to bring in a sprinkler contractor, in this case, we're also here for brown sprinkler, to come in and actually do an actual flow test on compliance on the water line that will be extended to, to our property, to your property. So we're here to recommend approving this $5,000 to perform that flood test, which will inform our design and make sure that we don't need a, we don't need a fire bomber, anything like that, or a disaster bomber, which will have the flow and pressure required for the project approval.
Questions? Okay. If you have no further questions, can I please have a motion for approval to award water flow test to brown sprinkler corners? Ms. Franceschi makes a motion, may I have a second please?
Second.
Mr. Yeager's second, roll call.
District one, Amber Franceschi.
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
And district five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. Up next, K U, he's been approved.
And what we're looking for here is, as we mentioned earlier in the presentation, K U needing a 30 foot wide easement along a portion of the north property to run their overhead lines. They're also needing an extension of 10 foot wide easement from the end of their overhead lines to the pad mount transformer. Once we nail all that down, we're going to coordinate this with the survey and plat to get all that filed appropriately. What we're looking at here is just a approval for, for the board to allow that to happen so that we can allocate that easement to K U for the extension of their, of their utility to your building.
Can you, can you bring that diagram up, Paul? Can you explain what the red and the yellow?
Yes, so what we're looking at right now with the K U easement approval, apparently, was a G, is extension of an easement from the northeast corner, upper right, to approximately the middle. And the 10 foot easement down towards the building to where, to where the pad mount transformer would end up being the final, final location. That's what we're looking at right now.
Where's that final location?
It's not been totally determined, but there's that, that, if you go out the bus lane, drive, kind of turn right, almost get past the building, there's a whole parking area, kids is down. That's the delivery lane in that general location. We're coordinating things like trash dumpsters and that this pad mount transformer would be in that general location.
One thing we clarified in the discussions was that 30 feet is 15 feet on each side of the lines, was 30 total feet, not 30 on both sides.
Correct.
And the 10 feet is the same length of that one.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Yes, no further questions, can I have a motion for approval?
Make a good one.
Mr. Montgomery with the motion, can I have a second please? Ms. Franceschi's second, roll call please.
District one, Amber Franceschi.
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
And district five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. Okay, finally, K U additional easement.
Guarantee this is the final, the final thing I will ask to address this evening. Actually, if you want, we'll leave that, leave it back up there. So what K U has asked is a, is for an additional extension of that 30 foot easement. Not only from the northeast corner to approximately the middle of your property, but all the way along your north property to the northwest corner. They've had requests from the properties west of you for three phases in the past. And so that, what we're asking for is approval to allow K U to assess easements all the way from your northeast corner to your northwest corner. For that 30 foot easement, for potential future.
This may be an silly question, but why, why are they considered two separate easements?
They ultimately would not. There might be two separate easements. The reason we probably broke it up is because the first portion of the easement from the middle to the northeast is required for this project. Further extension of easement is not necessarily required for this project, it's.
So are they, are they residential properties?
I believe that it's residential, commercial properties, but between your property and, I think there's two there.
While we've got this image of Mr. Montgomery, I asked earlier, the red line would be above ground, so we're bringing in on the back side of the property and then the, the green, that other line coming into the school would all be underground.
That would be underground.
Yeah.
And anything that K U does locating in that 30 foot easement would very likely be overhead lines. So we have rows of telephone poles along the back line of your property.
So this is totally on our property, not competing on the subdivision?
That, that's my understanding.
Like, so the fact that there's a lot of trees back there. That they're, that there's trees down or?
The, for any overhead lines that are, that are ultimately installed in that easement, the trees would be there, that's correct.
Well, I mean, if we give them an easement, that's there, I mean, it's theirs, that's the way, I mean, that's my understanding.
Well, what I mean is they're, so.
Now, if we give them an easement, they can do whatever they want on that.
Saying, like, if the tree is over the easement.
Absolutely.
Along the outside of the easement, they're better.
They're, they're gonna come tricked, that's correct.
Yeah.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the, the power line will be 15 feet, and that's what we're starting at half 30. Yes. Side of our property line, so a tree would actually have to be on the property line if it was theirs, and it would have to extend 15 feet to that pattern, correct?
They, they, they keep a certain distance.
But that's the distance that'd be.
Yes.
So I, the question you were asking, were my, my, who's gonna be responsible?
I was thinking about the property owners who, if you're gonna get your trees, yeah, that are on the back of the property.
As long as the tree is on the residential property, the, the K U doesn't have any reason to, to.
Trim on the side.
They, they trim your side of that tree, yes. But the residential side, you know.
Any more questions? If not, can I have a motion for approval please?
Make a good one.
Mr. Montgomery with the motion, may I have a second?
I'll have a second.
Mr. Pruitt's second, roll call please.
District one, Amber Franceschi.
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
And district five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. Thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it very hard. The final item that we will present and vote on this evening is the annual evaluation. Superintendent Jason Brewer, Department of Education, did discuss and rated Mr. Brewer on the seven standards that are presented to us as far as K S B A evaluation of those standards, our strategic, our leadership, our strategic, instructional, cultural, human resources. are strategic, instructional, cultural, human resource, managerial, collaborative, and influential leadership. As the Board of Education discussed and rated Mr. Brewer, we were very pleased with the work he has done throughout the last year. And we gave him, if you average the ratings, it's a rating scale of one through four, with four being exemplary. Board of Education concluded that we want to give him an overall rating of a four, an exemplary job that he has done with our school system over the last year. And I'll let the rest of the board speak as well, but we appreciate your hard work. But I also appreciate the fact that you know that you can't rest. And we know you won't. But we do appreciate everything you've done for our school system. We've had a lot of changes. We've got a lot of stuff going on. You have, you've marched forward every time, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'll kind of add to what Randy said, too. There's a, it's been a very bright spot for us since you've come with us. And we spoke some of what was, it's been two years ago, with our team, some things that we were expecting and some things that we were looking for in a superintendent. And so far, next year, pretty much hit the spot on that one. I appreciate that. You got a lot done in a little amount of time, so... And we got a lot to learn to do. So I'm excited to see how it keeps progressing. I appreciate what you have.
I just will say that I think sometimes being a leader means moving out of the comfort zone. And I think this district really needed to move in advance forward, and we've provided that direction. I know that your, your ethical standards are evident. And, uh, and it's just encouraging to me to see that, you know, you do raise the bar and you hold yourself to that same standard. You're not being expected to be anything. You're not giving yourself... So just appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very, 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 very. I'd like to have that. We've got a great team. I, I, I really enjoyed working for you all the last two years. And I love our team that we've got. Five of our staff members, 27 of our students, and it's been a joy to work here the last two years of life. Mr. Pruitt said, we've got a lot of work to still do ahead of us, and we're looking forward to it. Excited about it, and our staff's excited about this school year as well. So thank you all for that.
If no more questions or discussion, can I please have a motion to officially approve the evaluation of Mr. Brewer?
Make that motion.
Mr. Yeager makes that motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery with the second. Roll call.
District one, Amber Franceski.
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
And district five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. Get that. Uh, if nothing else, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pruitt with the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Franceschi, second. All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
My, uh, we're the, yeah, we're the toughest ones. Thanks, man. Give it to the people that got... I have a question. I don't know about...
Appreciate you welcome.
That's what it is. Very welcome.
We'll be, we'll be hoping that's...
That's why they're asking me to make a statement.
Thank you.
Remember, I always ask all this, and what that's... Yeah, well... All right. Safe travel back. If you need anything from me, let me know. Might as well let Paul. I was bringing in 375 with legging, I'm sorry. All right. I'll see y'all.